Good evening, everyone. My name is James Clark and I am the attorney at the present time for the planning board. And one of our first duties is the reorganization of our board. And so for that reason, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The following is the form of announcement that we read at all of our meetings. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this regular and reorganization meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you have completed your testimony. Thank you. Done the oath of office. Let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only other thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for a nomination for the position of chairperson of this board.
Nominate Mike Porcini.
You're second.
Second.
Just for protocol, I have to just call out, are there any other nominations for the position of chair?
Move to close. Second.
Call the roll.
Councilman Chase asks to be excused. Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq is not here. Cecile MacIver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Mustafa Mansory is not here. Charles Brown is not here. Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Porcini.
I guess I would say yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, once again.
The rest of this is yours.
It's a pleasure. All right, so we'll proceed with the nomination and selection of vice chairpersons. And for that, I nominate Cecile MacIver. Are there any other nominations?
Move to close.
Second.
Cecile has the nominee. Oh, oh. Call the roll.
Councilman Chase is excused. Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq. Wait, am I calling the roll for her to be nominated?
No, yeah, for her to be.
Okay, Carl Hauck. Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Porcini.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now we have to select our board attorney. So Mark, do we have any other, what are the?
We have, we received two applications. One from our, one from our current law firm of Clark and Vignolo, or Vinolo, and another one from Dakota's Law Firm. We certainly have Mr. Clark in here. Is anybody here from Dakota's? So you only have one firm to interview. The proposal indicating their qualifications as well as their cost proposal, which is And you have to conduct an interview per our bylaws. Yes, and afterwards, obviously, there would need to be a decision, a motion, and approval by the board. And we have a, we have a resolution for that.
Sounds good. All right, so I'll, I'll open it up to the board. Obviously, Mr. Clark is here, so board has any questions?
Mr. Clark, I assume you enjoy being the attorney here?
I, I enjoy it. I've been doing land use for forty some odd years. I'm now a resident of Franklin for the past almost two years, living in Canal Walk. And yes, I enjoy the work. I always have. And more importantly, I enjoy working with people who are skilled at what they do. And that stands for board members and staff.
Are there any other questions for Clark? Either end. I have no further questions, so I would at this time solicit nomination.
I'll nominate Clark and Vignolo as our attorneys.
I will make it bipartisan and second that.
Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Cecile MacIver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Porcini.
Yes.
Thank you for the confidence you've placed in us.
Well, thank you for excellent service over the past several years that you have been Planning Board Attorney. We appreciate it. Witness oath, Director of Planning, Mark Healy.
Right hand.
So now that we are all official, there is, Christine unfortunately had another opportunity to do a roll call, so we should do it now that we're formally aboard.
Okay, now we're formally aboard. Here's the roll call. Councilman Chase asks to be excused. Carl Hauck.
Present.
Mahir Rafiq is absent. Cecile MacIver.
Present.
Robert Mettler.
Present.
Mustafa Mansory asked to be, well, didn't ask, he's absent. Charles Brown is absent. Robert Thomas.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
And Chairman Porcini.
Here. All right, so the first item of business is the minutes from the regular meeting of December 18th.
The only people who can vote on that is Robert Mettler and Jennifer Ragnow.
They're both here, so that's wonderful. So one of the two of you will have to make a motion and.
I would like to move approval of the minutes of December 18th.
And I will second those.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
And Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
All right. Next is to approve our Planning Board calendar for 2020. As you can see, the first and third Wednesdays are, as usual, except for August, where we have our, our summer break there and no meetings until Labor Day or after Labor Day. I don't know when Labor Day, but no meetings until the second. So standard, standard calendars we've had in past years.
Do you feel there are two dates in July? Because the July 1st is the week of the 4th, of course, when a lot of people are away. Do you think that's going to be a necessary date to have? Or can we get by with just the 15th?
Carl is saying that the 4th is on a Friday or Saturday.
The holiday is.
Yeah, the actual holiday. So it should, people should be here. I mean, I'm not saying, I don't know if we'll have hearings, but we should schedule, we should schedule too, yes.
Okay.
Any other dates that look poor for anyone or a large majority? I'm not aware of any that, you know, would, would take out a large number of the board.
Well, I'm not sure when Labor Day is this year.
No, I don't, I don't either, but you can, you can bet that that's.
It's usually the first Monday. It should be the, it should be the first Monday.
It's the 7th.
Seventh, okay. So the second is okay.
Historically, that meeting has almost never been held, so I wouldn't hold your breath, but we, we should schedule it. I mean, better to have it on the schedule and cancel than have to call something ad hoc. So if there's no other discussion, what would you have to do? We have to pass a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Yeah, okay. So I'll not, I'll put forth a motion to adopt the calendar for 2020.
Second the motion.
Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Cecile MacIver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Porcini.
Yes. So save that. Christine has kindly agreed to send a reminder the Friday before the meeting, letting us know whether it's, it's canceled or whether.
No, I very generously put everybody's calendar right out in front of them, so they don't get caught up in their packets and thrown away. So y'all are good.
All right, so next is, next is a discussion item, extension of time on L'Oréal USA, PLN 1600007.
Have to pull it down, short people. I could even need Sherri Orinberger Jiri from Franklinist's office, and we represent L'Oréal USA Products, Inc. There had been, this planning board had approved preliminary and final approval for a 2,000, no, 21,831 square foot improvement. And that was November 9th, 2016. And we're here to ask for the second of an extension of time that we've, we require. We're asking for, that would give us until January 18th, 2021. And my client has assured me they believe that at that point, they'll be ready to proceed with their preliminary and final perfection of their obligations. I do have with me though, in case anyone from the board has any questions, I have with me Douglas Mosley from L'Oréal. He's the VP in charge of operations at L'Oréal. So if you have any questions, he's here to my right.
I, I don't, I don't know if we need him yet, but just in a nutshell, and excuse me because we were talking about something, what was the nature of the project again? Just to.
Great.
L'Oréal's had a number of applications over the years.
This was construction of 2,000, no, yeah, 21,831 square foot addition. It's also known as the North Dock Building Expansion, and it was to improve the efficiency of how L'Oréal is functioning.
Okay.
On the site. And the approval was memorialized and adopted on January 18th, 2017.
All right, thank you.
So does the board have any, any questions? I, I mean, I don't think we need the L'Oréal representative.
I don't need anything more. I don't see it harming us, letting them have an extension.
It's pretty much allowed under the law.
L'Oréal's been a good, good resident. They've donated plastic barrels to the Environmental Committee for their rain barrel project. And in light of that, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make, make a motion that, that it be given their extension to January 18th, 2021.
Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Cecile MacIver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
And Chairman Porcini.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And congratulations to the board.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the meeting to any public comments that are not going to be part of the regular hearing. So we have one hearing tonight for 2 JFK Boulevard for the John F. Kennedy Memorial Proposal. So that will have its own separate hearing. So if there's anyone who would like to speak on any other planning matter, I make a motion to open the meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for general comment.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this portion of the public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is, is closed to the public. So now we'll proceed to our only hearing of the night, 2 JFK Boulevard LLC, PLN 1900010.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a site plan approval to construct on property at 2 JFK Boulevard, a monument and a center for the honoring of John F. Kennedy. I am going to hand out to the board a packet of documents which include an aerial exhibit, also documents which were part of the original submission in this application, as well as some photographs, and also the plans of the monument. So I think it'll be easier for the board to follow along. I don't know how, if you want to mark this one exhibit, Mr. Clark.
I need to look at it first to make an intelligent decision on that one.
Okay. Part of, part of it is part of the plan set that was submitted, part of it is additional information.
The first five pages, two is A1. Gets us the aerial and the plans. And then A2 will be the photos of the existing embankment facing west. And A3 will be the typical Allen Block retaining wall.
By way of background, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as everyone is eminently aware, in 1962, President Kennedy was assassinated.
63.
63, I'm sorry, 63, was assassinated in Texas. Shortly thereafter, Franklin Township became the first municipality in the United States to name a street in his honor, what is now JFK Boulevard. It was formerly known as Loop Lane, and the township did rename the street in his honor. In the early 1980s, the Rubin family, which was a family that was very involved in Franklin Township, built a shopping center at the intersection of JFK Boulevard and Easton Avenue. That shopping center at that time housed the Family Hardware Store when there were Family Hardware Stores before Lowe's and Home Depots. The property is still in the name of a member of the Rubin family. Recently, a nonprofit organization, a peace and nonviolent foundation, approached the Rubin family about putting a monument on the property to further honor the late President Kennedy, and also as an educational tool, because it will be an interactive display with a monument and also some television screens, which will give some background about the life of President Kennedy. The proposal itself is to construct the monument, which is 12 by 66, and I want to correct Mr. Healy's TRC memo, which says 12 by 73 feet. It should be 66 feet along the frontage of the property. We do have the exhibits that were originally submitted in conjunction with this application for you to review. We also, since we submitted our application, had a meeting with the Township Consulting Engineer to discuss the TRC report, and we will address that this evening. I do have one witness that I will call. Also, by the way, this is a permitted use, and there are no variances that are being sought in conjunction with this application. Vajira, can you come up and be sworn?
Raise your right hand, please. Some may swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Vajira Gunawadana. I work for Nigerian Associates, One Industrial Way West, Edenton, New Jersey.
Can you spell your last name, please?
G U N A W A R D A N A.
Very good, thank you.
Vajira, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And for how long have you been so licensed?
About 25 years.
Can you?
Accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vajira, you prepared the plans that are the subject of this application, have you not?
You're one of my associates, yes.
Okay, under your direction.
Yes.
Okay. And the package that we submitted to the board this evening, you have those plans on a board to refer to during your testimony, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
All right, can you briefly describe, and I'm sure the board is eminently aware, but describe where the subject property is and what's located on the subject property at the present time?
Yes, as you indicated, Peter, this is located at the intersection of Kennedy Boulevard and Easton Avenue, and the existing shopping center, it's located, it's not shopping center, the existing commercial property is located right, right on JFK Boulevard across from, from this park right here. And the only feature that we are going to do is to add the memorial on the, in the front of the property with direct exposure to JFK Boulevard. Essentially, it's a rectangular memorial on pavers, brick pavers. It's 66 feet by 12 feet. And just to give you an idea of what 66 feet looks like, Peter reminded me that width of this wall, this room is about 66 feet, and it's going to be that long and 12 foot wide. And it's going to be, you have in your packet, it's going to be access from the existing parking lot, which is on the southeastern side. And essentially, we will have access, two access points from the parking lot onto the memorial. So people would walk into the memorial and see the exhibits, enjoy the exhibits, and there'll be displays on display boards on the wall, there are two walls. And that's essentially the extent of the memorial. The statue is a special statue. There is a copy of the statue in your packet. It's, I don't have it here.
For the record, Vajira, that's on the third page of the package that you submitted to the board?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's, it was manufactured and brought here, and the statue is ready to be installed. It's going to be mounted on a concrete pedestal, and it'll be facing JFK Boulevard. And in addition to that, that will be, that's going to be the highlight. The concept is that it's going to be, when people drive along JFK Boulevard, it's like when you go on the Staten Island Ferry and you see the Statue of Liberty, it's going to be a signature statue. And it's going to be illuminated at night from dusk to dawn.
And when, and is it going to be illuminated in what manner? It could be ground lighting that's going to illuminate it?
Yeah, so we have, we had discussed, we had originally proposed four lights to, for security purposes, signing down on the memorial. But based on the comments we received from the TRC, we eliminated two of the lights. So all the lights will be facing, facing the existing complex, the parking lot. But the statue itself will have a light coming from the ground. It's be, it'll be illuminated upwards towards the statue. So there will be no glare or any of that for any of the people or traffic on JFK Boulevard.
Now, with respect to the access, there's parking available right in front of the proposed monument, is that correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay. And the site itself has 133 parking spaces, as per the approved site plan approval?
That is correct.
Okay. In addition to the lighting that you described on the statue, the ground lighting and the two light poles, these are two new light poles, is that correct?
That's correct.
And those light poles will be facing from JFK inward towards the, towards the monument?
That is correct.
Okay. There were two other light poles that were proposed facing out toward JFK, and those will be removed from the.
They will be removed based on the comments we received from the TRC.
Will there be any other lighting? Is there going to be a flag pole or anything else on the site that will also require any lighting?
Yes, there is going to be a flag pole right at the entrance. I think the detail is shown on here. When you enter, when you face the memorial from the parking lot, right in the middle, there'll be a flag pole, and that will be right across from the statue, and that will be eliminated at night. Again, that's from the ground up, going up towards the, towards the flag.
Okay. And the other thing that's in your package is an entrance sign detail, which is the same sign that's currently on the subject property, it's just going to be, the face of the sign is going to be changed, is that correct?
That's correct.
We're not adding any new signs or expanding the existing sign, we're just adding the picture of President Kennedy on the existing sign.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I referenced the TRC report that was dated December 23rd, 2019 in this matter. As a result of that report, you scheduled a meeting with CME, the Township's Consulting Engineer, did you not?
Yes, we did.
And you reviewed all of the comments in the report with the consulting engineer?
Yes, we did.
And as a result of that meeting, there are going to be some other minor modifications to the plan as recommended by the township engineer, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. One of the things that was, was requested was that a certain curbing be eliminated and that bumper stops be put in place of the curbing.
That is correct.
And that is in the parking lot in the area in the vicinity of the monument, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the DRCC, he raised a question of the approval. We've already submitted an application to DRCC, is that correct?
That's correct.
And they have approved, conditionally approved the project, subject to the resolution of approval by Franklin Township.
That's correct.
The, the other comments, items three, four, five, are basically additional details and footing foundation, footings for the light poles, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's just technical in nature, they wanted some additional information.
Yes.
Okay. And we talked about the lighting that was going to be changed. You are also going to be required to do a survey of the area of disturbance, correct?
Correct. You've already ordered the survey, that's going to be done next week, yes.
And the last thing that, and which is part of the exhibit two, there was a concern about whether there needed to be a retaining wall that needs to be constructed in the area of the proposed monument, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you describe to the board what the existing condition is at the front of the property along JFK Boulevard? And if the board wants to look at the photographs, they're, they're A2.
Yeah, there, there are three photographs showing the existing berm. And from an engineering standpoint, when we lay out that pad on top, 66 feet by 12 feet, the edge of it might not be stable enough. So we might be required to have a wall at the end to stabilize the future memorial and the slope. So we've discussed with the, with CME, and we're planning to put, in the event that that is required, we will put an, construct an typical Allen Block wall. Some, the look of that is shown on the, on the pictures.
And that's exhibit A3, that's the wall that you would construct if necessary to support the monument?
That's correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I have two questions.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, maybe three. What, what long-term maintenance is required with the facility, and how will that be handled?
That, that, the, the maintenance will be handled by the property owner. The nonprofit entity will construct the monument on the property, and the owner has agreed to maintain the monument as the owner maintains the rest of the property.
Okay, the other question is a little bit concerning aesthetics, since I'm looking at your pictures of the. since I'm looking at your pictures of the bank, and when you explained about the retaining wall, is there anything that can be done about the condition of the sidewalk across the frontage?
Are you talking...
Of the...
The grass is sitting down and growing in the cracks in the sidewalk.
You have a nice monument, and the whole thing is going to be cleaned up, and that's really kind of an eyesore.
I, I think that can also be cleaned up when we're doing the work there.
Why not just re-black top it? I don't care how you do it, but it shouldn't, it doesn't seem fitting with the rest of the project.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Thomas. I, I don't know whether re-black topping or, or just a new coat on top of it, but obviously it needs to be cleaned up, and that could be a condition of approval. And it could be a condition that it'll be cleaned up to the satisfaction of your engineer.
The last thing, I'm sorry, I, I probably should have looked at the plan better. Is there any need or landscaping for, or any landscaping proposed for that area?
We are going to landscape the, the slope.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that's going to be stabilized, and yes, landscaped, that is correct.
That was my question.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because you're showing flowers and boxwood here, it's going to look similar to what you're showing us?
Well, it's going to, I don't know the exact planting detail, we haven't determined that, but it's going to be beautified and, you know, landscaped, with the landscape.
Okay, and how will that be maintained? Because the one thing that looks worse is when you've put in flowers and shrubs, and then come the hot and dry season, and no one takes care of them and waters them, and they die off, and it looks worse.
Well, it's going to be incumbent upon the owner of the center to maintain it. And obviously, there's going to be an investment in the, in the monument in the center. I think it'll be a beautification, and it'll be incumbent upon him to do it. And I'm sure because of what's going to be there that he will do it.
I have a couple of questions, Peter. First of all, you say the monument itself is going to face JFK Boulevard. Will the interactive part of the display, I assume, will face the parking lot?
That's correct.
And so, anything you read, anything that's interactive, the TV screens, everything but the monument itself will face the parking lot? So the question I have, and I think the TRC went to this a little bit, is, you know, what would the, what sort of vehicle protection may, may be required? You know, much, you're familiar with like the Cafe Amici site, they have a daycare, and there's a playground, but there's, there's bollards around. You know, I, I'm just worried that, you know, it is a parking lot, and although that section of the parking lot is rarely occupied, and I don't think there's a parking concern. The question is if somebody's like enjoying the monument and reading the display, and somebody comes along and doesn't quite understand that that is sort of a separate thing, will there be any sort of delineation of that?
There was a request, as I think Vajira indicated, when we met with CME, they didn't request any bollards, but they did request bumper stops.
Bumper stops, so we originally had a curb, we replaced the curb with bumper stops, so that's additional protection. And there's also going to be architectural split rail fence right around the entire monument to dress it up. But the bumper stop is the one that's going to prevent any vehicle from going over on the parking lot.
Okay. Carl?
So you agreed to do a survey, is that, that's correct?
Yes.
In the localized survey?
Yes, we, in fact, that's been ordered already, yeah.
Just, just looking at the, the handout that you provided on the nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-one plan?
The original site plan approval.
Correct, there, there show, right where you're going, there shows a six-inch water line that feeds a hydrant in the parking lot. It, that line's going to be relocated, right? It can't be under the monument.
No, it will not be under the monument, we will take a look at that, I mean, that...
According to the survey, it looks like it's going to be under the monument. It looks to be about, I don't know, five feet off the existing edge of, of the parking lot? There's a six-inch water line. And it runs all the way down towards the existing monument sign near the driveway.
Carl, we'll go out there and survey and make sure that the monument is not on top of...
Yeah, we will make sure that the monument, when do you get the updated survey?
If not, I mean, it would have to be relocated.
Yes.
Water line.
That's correct.
Okay, the other question is, the, the wall wasn't any one of the plans, and I understand you're doing a survey. What do you anticipate the overall height of the wall being adjacent to that?
It won't be more than, it'll be between two to four feet, the intent is to stabilize the bank.
So the, the wall won't be greater than four feet? Because anything over that is a structural wall.
And we will, if it's a structural wall, we'll provide the structural stability calculations, right? That's your question, right, yes.
And there won't be any impact to the, the existing bike path or paved path?
No.
Thank you.
So, just a further Carl's question, when you look at the photos that you provided?
Right.
What is the, what is the height of that slope in total? Is that, is that two foot, four foot, how tall is that?
The existing slope?
Yeah.
See, unfortunately, we don't have the survey right now.
Okay.
So, but it's a fairly steep slope.
Okay, so, I mean, the purpose of the wall is to create a platform on top for, for the plaza, correct? So, I, I mean, I would assume if the difference is five feet, that the wall has to be close to five feet in height, rather than two feet?
Not necessarily, because we are not taking the wall all the way down to the bottom of the embankment. See, for instance, if, this is a flat area, right?
Mm-hmm.
You need one more hand.
One more hand. So, if the slope is, and we want to have twelve-foot width, right? The width of the memorial is twelve feet. So just to stabilize the corner, we want to have a wall so that we have a clean cut. So, we will have that wall, and the footing foundation will go, will, will go about four feet. But the exposure to the outside need not be four feet, that's what I'm saying.
So that wall might be not at the bottom of the slope, but somewhere in, in the middle of the slope?
Yes.
And did you go over that with CME, because...
Well, the detail, that's what we're going to work with the CME on that. They said, we don't, until we do the survey, we won't know whether we will need a wall.
Okay.
We need a wall, that's something we will work with them, and, you know, make sure that it's...
Okay, and then, so, I did get an email from Darren Mazzy from CME. Following up on, on your response, you provided a response to the different TRC comments. So I'll just read those to the board. With respect to issue number one, your response was curb will be eliminated and bumper blocks installed to address vehicular overhang and protection of memorial area. His email to me, our office would not, would not take issue with the elimination of the curb in review item number one. The applicant may want to consider a curb as a straight edge for the paver area, but that would be accomplished, but that could be accomplished with a paver soldier row. We would defer to his professional, I think he meant to put opinion on this item. So do you have a response to that?
I don't know, from a safety perspective, I think we would prefer to have the bumper blocks, you know, but, and then, but, I haven't seen that comment, is he saying the edge of the...
Well, again, yeah, we got, we got this today, and then he sent me this email, so we've been kind of quickly going back and forth, so. But I would suggest a response to that, is you can go over that with...
Yeah, we'll work with him, I mean, we've been...
Item six was, that was regarding the lights. He writes the critical item here is that they agreed to remove the floodlights and install typical shoebox lights fixtures. Is that, so when you talked about eliminating the two of the four lights, and that the two lights would be facing into the site, those would be in the form of shoebox lights as opposed to floodlights?
What do you mean by shoebox? I mean, the intent is...
Shoebox is the type that has, it looks like a box, and the light is inside that box, as opposed to a floodlight where it's angled out and the light is just shining, you know, and it's unshielded.
Well, the intent is to eliminate the plaza and, and without any overflow onto JFK. So we will be doing the lighting model and show that there's no spillage outside the plaza. But we want to have light on the plaza, if the shoebox design works, definitely we will have that. But we want to make sure that the intent of the lighting to eliminate the plaza is maintained. I mean, we'll work with Darren, I haven't spoken to him about that.
I'll leave that to the board, I mean...
Yeah, I, I think, Mark, the, the bottom line is, there, there are a couple of things when the meeting took place. One is they wanted to get lighting away from JFK Boulevard, which we agreed to. If they, if shoebox lighting will effectively illuminate the plaza or the monument, we will do that, if we have an alternative, we'll, we'll propose it to Darren, but we'll work it out to his satisfaction. We understand what he wanted, and, and I think we can resolve that.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Mike, I have a follow-up question.
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
The, the pavers for the monument are basically going to be flush?
Yes.
The existing pavement, the parking lot?
Maybe flush or, no, slightly higher.
Slightly higher.
Maybe slightly higher, because we want the drainage to go into the parking lot.
And the statue faces the parking lot?
The stat...
The statue faces JFK, JFK Boulevard.
So the flag pole is on the parking lot side?
That's correct, between the statue and the parking lot.
So you're not worried about the flag pole being, the twenty-foot flag pole being knocked over by cars parking in that parking spot?
Well, we discussed that with CME, so in that area, we want to make sure there's sufficient bollard width to make sure that it doesn't go, because it's inside the memorial, the...
Well, it's right on the edge of the pavers, when the pavers are basically right on the edge of the parking lot, or bump into the parking lot.
We can, see, we want to make sure there was enough access between the flag pole and the statue so that people can walk.
Right, one point five, four, almost two feet, roughly.
Right, so we didn't want to, you know, bring it any closer, so...
But I'm just worried about different wheelbases parking near there where they could back right into, I mean, they have instances at Amici's all the time with trucks parking, and those lights are set back into the grass halfway between the curb and the fence, I would say like three or four feet behind the pavement area. That'd be a concern for that flag, twenty-foot flag pole to be knocked over.
Yeah, the TRC comment eight mentioned that as well, and so I think that, that there needs to be, you know, some, some sort of protection. So, you know, so the, the overall impression I get is, you know, there's some details here, right? That need to be worked out.
That's correct.
So, I mean, that said, this, if this were a, you know, development of any type, I'd send you away, and you'd come back when you had your i's dotted and t's crossed. Being that this is what it is, you know, I, I didn't have a great deal of objection and, and, and didn't turn you away tonight. But, you know, if the board were to use an approval, I would strongly recommend that whoever makes that motion condition that everything be worked out with the township professionals and CME to their satisfaction. Because who knows what your survey is going to turn up? We already know of a water line that may indeed have to be relocated at some probably not-so-insignificant expense, and there's no way around that. So, these things are unknowable at this time, but, you know, they will be known.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Orsini, and quite frankly, when we did get the report from the TRC, we tried to schedule a meeting sooner than last week, last Friday, but because of the holidays and because of Darren being away for a period of time, the earliest we could meet with him was last Friday. The meeting was, in fact, very productive, and it's our intent to make sure that whatever modifications he requested, and any future modifications he, he requests, we will comply with. And again, if either planning or in-house engineering or order has any comments, we'll deal with them.
Okay, why don't we open the meeting to the public?
One more, also, the engineering department would, the wall that may be partially up the slope will need footings to staple, stabilize that wall, the engineering department will need to look at that.
Yes, yeah, we're aware of that.
All right, so you have a motion to open the meeting to the public for this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the meeting is now open to the public for any comment on this application?
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that the hearing on this application be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other board discussion?
One item of clarification, because I just want to make sure the board understands the application in a kind of a big-picture way, again, with the understanding that they'll work out the details with staff. But my discussion with Darren was that the wall can't be in the middle of the slope. It either has to be kind of no wall, or it has to be at the base of the slope. You know, and that's a detail he's going to have to work out with Darren. But, you know, that may mean, you know, that's why I asked the question about how high is that slope? And it looks like it from the pictures, it looks to me like it might be four or five feet in height. So you may end up with, you know, a wall, Allen block wall that might be four foot high. And I think the property line might be a foot or two in off of that sidewalk. So if you recall from the photos, you know, from the sidewalk, a foot or two in, there may end up being an Allen block retaining wall for some distance of about four feet. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware of that, with those details to be worked out with the engineer.
Wouldn't the wall have to be at least as high as the soil level? So that you don't have slippage?
I, I, what I've, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I'll tell you what I've seen. I've seen there's a wall of a certain height, and then they can still make up the grade a little bit with, with, with a less of a slope. You might end up seeing that, I don't know if it necessarily has to be exactly the difference, but, you know, you might have the wall four feet, and maybe over the course of ten feet, it goes up another foot, and then there's the plaza, I mean, there might be something like that, but I think the, but it's, I mean, looking at the photos, that, that slope is about four to five feet in height generally.
Right.
So the wall may be generally in that, that height, we're not talking twelve foot, twenty foot?
No, no.
That's why I'm trying to make sure again that that's possible, that that, that might be what ends up being there.
And this is also a more decorative wall, it's not like we're piling cement blocks on...
No, I mean, they have, the photo was, you know, an exhibit in there of what, what it would look like, and that's part of their proposal, so that, that's what it would look like.
Yeah, like I said, until we do the survey, we can't tell the exact height of the wall. But we'll work with CME to make sure that that's both stable and aesthetically pleasing, you know, so...
That's the important thing, yes.
Any other board comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion for this.
I make a motion to approve this application with all the, um, attorney...
All right, I've been making notes, we, we kind of re-engineered the project. So I would offer the following conditions to be attached to your motion, if you're okay with that. Compliance with the TRC January two, two thousand twenty memo to the satisfaction of the staff and the outside professionals. We talked about adding additional landscaping, also to the satisfaction of the staff and the outside professionals. We talked about cleaning up the sidewalk and addressing the pavement issue. It's admittedly in poor condition, once again, to the staff and outside professional satisfaction. We talked about the installation of a split rail fence and the bumper blocks. Applicant also needs to obtain final DRCC approval. The retaining wall would not exceed approximately five feet in height, and with appropriate footings and any location satisfactory to the staff and the outside professionals.
Also relocation of the water line if needed where the fire hydrant is.
Carl, Mark, anything else for conditions?
Hey, we have them.
I'll second.
Carl Hout?
Yes.
Cecil McGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Do.
Okay, we have any work session items or anything, you know? Okay, and then, in that case...
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, and I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Have a good night. And if we, I didn't say it already, Happy New Year. And if we, I didn't say it already, happy new year.